Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to this special call meeting, Monday, October 6th, 2025, Glen County Board of Commissioners. I'm going to do the invocation and Commissioner Tosterson is going to do the pledge. Please stand. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful place we live. We ask that you watch over our first responders, our citizens, and all those that make Glen County great. We ask for your wisdom today to help us make the decisions that make this county a better place to live and play. We ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up, receiving an update from City Manager Regina McDuffie regarding the rollout of the microtransit system. Mr. Fallon and Ms. McDuffie, I guess. I guess Bill sponsored you, Regina.
Oh, thank you, Bill. Appreciate that.
All yours, Regina.
Good afternoon. Glad to be here. Of course, as you know, we have been talking about the transit for quite some time. The city did roll out our transit system starting September 16th, and we have a promotional going on up until November 16th for a free ride with the Brunswick Breeze. We have experienced tremendous demand for our system and are very thankful for all of the feedback and information that we've gotten so far from the public. And, you know, we are certainly working to make sure that we work out all the logistics and things that we are encountering. The rides after November 13th will be $3 or less. We have rides for seniors and students that are discounted. Just wanted to go through, and this is, you know, basically a brief briefing to update you all on the program thus far. So, I just wanted to briefly review how to ride. You normally would create an account, book a ride, meet the driver, and go on your way. You can book a ride by calling, the 912-574-2102, or online through your phone. The fares, as I stated, $3 is the standard fare after November 16th. We will have rides to the airport to and from for $12, and students, seniors, and military will be discounted rate at $2. Children under 12 are free. Children over 13 can ride by themselves. Children under 12 have to be accompanied, and any additional riders are $1 each. Of course, this just goes through how you set it up on your cellphone and how you book a ride. Basically, it's similar to what you do with the Uber Live situation. It has location, transit, what it'll tell you when you're picked up, and what locations meet the vehicle. Our service hours are Monday through Thursday, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Friday to Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., and Sunday, 8:00 to 8:00. We are consistently looking at data to see when the peak hours are and trying to accommodate those better to make sure that we have rides available as needed. Of course, our service area is the same as presented, and popular destinations, and these destinations are being tracked. We know that there has been significant destinations to the Walmart, to the hospital, and to the school systems. So, there's been numerous rides that have been recorded, and all of this data we'll bring back to you all, you know, on a periodic basis. These are just some of the frequently asked questions, and we do have a customer center at our 503 Mansfield where people can go and purchase vouchers or passes and buy into the system, as well as if there's, we have a lost and found there, and they will provide customer service, and there's customer service through the phone. So far, we have been really active. The utilization of our system has shown that we've had an average of 5.1 per ride, which is a very high, and this was from the first two weeks. It hasn't been updated in the last two weeks, so that may have changed, but we did start off really strong. And we feel like, of course, you know, since we are in a promotional stage, that demand may decrease some, but we are hoping that with this introductory period, people will get familiar with the system and learn what the system's all about. This introductory period will get people riding, and our demand will stay constant. This is a map that shows where the origins for rides. The pink dots are the origins. The blue dots are the destinations. And as you can see throughout our area, there are lots of different destinations in the city and county, and shows that, you know, people are going all over our service area. For our first 20 days, we've had 3,632 rides and an average of 182 rides a day. Our average ride is about 15 minutes or five miles. We've had 60% of the rides being ride shared. 608 forward riders have left reviews, which we've had a 4.8% or 4.8 star rating. And we've recorded 66% of our rides having origin or destination point outside the city limits. So, that's kind of the update that I have for today. We know that there has been some logistical things where people have called for a ride and they couldn't get one, but we are trying to work through that. But of course, we have asked the county to invest in our system, which would help us expand and provide more ride hours so that we can have more supply for the demand that we've seen. We, you know, think that the system is working at this point. Yes, we've had some challenges, but we hope to work out a lot of that throughout the time that we're, you know, our promotional period and certainly be able to meet the needs of the community. The best thing I've seen is that, you know, people have been using the system. There's been ride shares all over the place, and people are, you know, feeling like it's helping their situation. So, very thankful for what we've gone through so far, and I'll open it up for questions. Thank you.
I have a question regarding the need of the rider in terms of their activity. Do you have any data about that, any early data to share, like if it was a student or a worker?
I will have to look. John, did we have that? Yeah, it tracks. It does track by age, but we can, if someone signs in as a student for the discount or a senior, we will have that data. So, we can bring that back in terms of how many students are riding and, you know, how much, how many seniors are riding. And I don't know, Dr. Evans is here. I don't know if he's got any response from the college. I'll ask him.
So, for the college, we have housing exploded. As you know, we have 654 beds, roughly on campus. We have over 800 students almost that are in our housing on and off campus. Most of them don't show up with a car. Not every student shows up with a car. And so, what we're seeing is students are using this. In fact, it's so busy on the usage with the college that we're thinking about having to have designated spots on campus for pickup and drop off because I keep seeing the vehicles coming and going from the college. It's extremely useful for our students because so many of our students are first-generation college students who don't have a vehicle when they come to college. And this gives them an opportunity to use that to get to Walmart or wherever. A lot of them are coming from CPA, which is out by Sam's, and also to get to work because 80% of our students work as well as when they go to school. So, this is helpful for all of them.
And that was a good point. We are looking at, like, places where we need to have designated pickup, such as the hospital, the college, at the Target, at the Walmart, so that the vehicle won't have to circle in the parking lot. They'll have a designated pickup. So, we are going to identify those and try and mark those places for efficiency and for, you know, people to know exactly where they need to be.
I'd like to offer a few comments.
Certainly.
So, I'm in the seat for District 4 on the commission, which transcends both city and county, and I'd like to commend our city partners, especially you, Ms. McDuffie and Mr. Hunter. I believe that y'all got the right sauce with Brunswick Breeze. I had the pleasure to ride Brunswick Breeze just this morning. I downloaded the app last night and took the ride this morning. Very short wait. The driver was professional. The vehicle was comfortable, clean. That particular driver had lived in Glen County for eight years. You know, Glen County, we do have a senior population. We're in the top quartile in Georgia as far as seniors. And from my perspective, microtransit enhances the quality of life. If you're one of those seniors and you may have difficulty getting your physician for regular appointments, this is a significant quality of life feature. And Dr. Evans mentioned the college students. I personally know 10 college students who live off campus, and only three of the 10 have an automobile. Southeast Georgia Health System is also right at the core of District 4. This is important for not only employees and staff of Southeast Georgia Health System, but as I mentioned, people getting to their appointments. In the future, I'm hopeful of entertainment events that draw crowds, and you can imagine with a lot of people at one time, the benefit of this for riders. Other cities, you've mentioned some of them. Here's a few more. Gastonia, North Carolina, Gainesville, Georgia, Wilson, North Carolina, Savannah, Georgia, Spartanburg. So, in conclusion, I support and applaud your efforts with Brunswick Breeze.
Thank you so much. And you did mention seniors, and one of the things that I recognize as well is that St. Mark's Towers, which used to have vans for its residents, no longer provides that. And I encountered a lady who was so thankful, you know, to have that opportunity for transportation from St. Mark's. So, they are being serviced as well.
I guess I would add is the rest of the city. And the feedback I've gotten, which I'm not surprised, extremely positive from all age groups, especially people who have employment. But this is a home run, really, for all of us. I do hope that we're able to find funding to invest in this because that's what it is. It will increase and improve the quality of life for everybody.
And I appreciate that. We are going to put together some numbers and come back and ask for a investment from the county. So, I appreciate that. And Commissioner Swett, if I was 30 years younger, I would have done cartwheel.
Sorry, I missed that.
I do appreciate you all launching this on my anniversary, so as a present to my wife. I don't know if she took advantage of this.
Thank you.
I hope you did something besides.
I know.
Anything else?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, Regina. I know it's early, starting on, and coming from my background, I look at the cost of fuel, insurance, and all the things long-term it's going to cost the city as well. Has there been any ideas of how much fuel? Well, let me start off. Is any of the five vehicles an e-van?
No, they're not.
None of them are not. That's fine.
Some of them are hybrids.
That's good. Hybrids good. I have one. My biggest concern is the cost of maintenance, maintaining vehicles. I have a fleet of 58 trucks, and that can be the most expensive part. And I'm tickled to death that this has started off very successful and getting some good feedback, but once we get to a point where we have the service on vehicles, tires, fuel, oil changes and stuff like that, is what's the expectation for just five units, what it would cost us going through the rest of the year or the future?
Well, the contract that we have is a set contract with a third-party operator, and all of those things are on them. Basically, the only way our costs would increase if our service hours were, and we would have to negotiate that increase. The vehicles themselves, that's the beauty of it. I think they are leased, so they can switch them out pretty quickly. It doesn't take but a day or two to wrap them, and they have been able to, you know, provide them. So, our thoughts are, is that, you know, with the lease program, it's going to, you know, they've already built in certain costs of maintenance and leasing, and since we budgeted on the basis of service hours, that they have already incorporated those increases.
You were saying, I heard you use the term "we" when you're describing who is in control of this, who is running this. Who is "we"?
"We" is the city because we are the investors, of course, and we are the, you know, administrators.
If you're wanting the county to buy into this, do we have any say-so in?
We can negotiate that, of course. I mean, this is not something that, you know, I mean, your investment would definitely buy in authority to manage the system, and, you know, we could set up some type of, not commission, but something to, you know, make decisions for the system. So, I think that's something very much, something that the city would engage.
We would need to probably rewrite the contract. Is that right, Mr. County Attorney? If we were to invest in this with county funds? Because I've got a couple of questions that I want to ask. Do we have the authority as a county? If we buy into this plan, can we expand the hours?
Well, the, yes. I mean, the hours can be expanded by dollars.
On the rates that are being set down by the city, I mean, do we have any say-so in the rates? Do we have any say-so in the routes that we, that could be expanded upon? And the reason for that question is, I'm Commissioner for District 1, and this thing doesn't, this transit system doesn't go in my district at all.
Well, the reason that it doesn't is because your district is considered rural. We have conversations that we're going to have with the transit that operates the rural system, and we have, there's money that's designated for that, but we haven't talked to them about how that money maybe can be shared. But it's all about the dollars. So, if there's some investment from the county to go into the rural areas, I mean, we can do it. We don't have any federal monies that will do it right now, but we could, all we need is the money.
I guess where I'm going with this is, do we have, if we're buying in, do we have say-so in the contract?
We, well, the contract with VIA, I'm not sure how that can be changed, but I think if the county invested, then that would be an intergovernmental agreement between the city and county, and all of those things can be shared.
To Commissioner Toston's point, and even though it's a rural county, he does have the port, which has nearly 10, 11, 12 businesses, and one of the largest ports for rural, on rural officer. You know, even though it's District 1, it's not all rural, but that port is very, there's 600, 700 people out there.
Well, when I say rural, we, the way the state and federal government kind of look at our county and areas, they are urbanized areas and they're rural areas, and that area is considered rural by their descriptions. And that's why I refer to it as rural because the investments that we make can be made in urbanized areas.
Where is the urbanized area?
Urbanized areas is the city of Brunswick and some places that are adjacent to it.
I saw Doc Junction on there. That's why I asked.
Yeah, all of the areas that are encompassed in our footprint are considered part of those urbanized areas, as well as St. Simon's. St. Simon's, according to the state and federal government, is an urbanized area, and I think it's based on the density of the population, but that's the reason, you know, those classifications are made.
How much was our investment, Regina? Again?
We were asking for $150,000 this year, and then that would have increased for next year.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Well, thank you all for the opportunity. Thank you all for the support. I really, really appreciate your, you know, engagement in this and actually, you know, giving us the opportunity to put that. Thank you.
Before you go, Ms. McDuffie, is it possible, Bill, and I requested this when you made your first initial request, to maybe bring us a option, how this might could work, get with Commissioner Tosterson, and see what we can come up with instead of us just leaving it out there in the air?
Certainly.
This thing is on fire, people. The need is here, and I agree. I think the folk out in, we don't consider it rural, but the state and USDA does.
Right.
And so, I think we can work around that. But I would like to see if maybe the three or four, a couple of commissioners get with you all and Sam and see what we can work out.
Okay. Well, definitely. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'll follow up there on that. And Regina, you did say you're going to come back with some additional numbers once you, okay. All right. So, we'll start there, and then we'll, we can put a group together and just try and iron out some of the, some of the things that you brought up today and look at expanded hours and other things as well.
All right. Next up, receiving an update from Nationwide, the county's third-party administrator on retirement plan features. Mr. Paul?
Good afternoon, Commissioners Dwayne Paul, K, HR Director. Today, I'm going to bring you to your presentation from Nationwide. Nationwide facilitates the county's retirement contribution plan, and I want to bring an update for a plan enhancement. With me today, I have Mrs. Scott Roland Martin from Nationwide.
Good afternoon, everybody. How y'all doing?
Good afternoon.
I'll just make one correction for the record. It's Roland Wilson, but I grew up with that whole Roland Martin fishing thing, so I get that. We are a fishing country, so that's okay. All right. First of all, it's a pleasure to be here. This is a beautiful part of the state, and I always enjoy coming down. What I want to talk to you today about is really just a plan enhancement, and fundamentally, I'm going to talk to you about a solution that is designed to provide pension-like benefits to your employees. All right? Now, when I look at, when I talk to boards and commissioners, I understand there is a variety of backgrounds that I'm speaking to, and that does not necessarily mean that everybody over here understands investments. So, the only indulgence I'll ask, I try to talk very fundamentally when I'm speaking to your employees. It doesn't matter. So, if y'all will allow me to just speak very fundamentally at some level, make sure you understand what we're talking about. And I've been on boards too, and I've done nodding on things that I really didn't understand 100% of. Okay? So, without further ado, so what we're talking about is one investment, lifetime benefits. I'm sorry, hit the right button. This one's okay. Cool. All right. All right. So, our product is called Retirement Income Builder. And what it provides is a 6% annual income based on what we call a high watermark. And I'm going to explain what that means in a minute. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to make a general comment so everyone is on the same page. So, we have two pension plans. We have a defined benefit plan and a defined contribution plan. So, this is related to the defined contribution plan, which would be for anyone who started with the county after 2020. This does not affect our defined benefit plan, which is our older pension plan.
Thank you, Tamara. I appreciate that. All right. So, basically, what we're looking at, you have additional growth opportunity here through a bond alternative that maintains equity positions and exposure and offers returns just like a normal investor would. What we also have, though, we have the benefit of high watermark. So, basically, I'll show you the script of that, but just imagine the market does this, right? Well, at certain times of year, in this particular solution, because here, it locks in that high. So, what it does is, it solves for volatility. All right? And then, in the end, you have a 6% income opportunity that you cannot outlive. Okay? So, it solves for that issue too because a large percentage of us who are going to retirement are concerned about outliving our money. Okay? Hit it that way. There we go. So, what the Lifetime Income Builder replaces is basically fixed income. All right? So, when you look at this graph, what you have are what we call traditional target date funds. All right? You guys have that right now. That's already here. And let me explain. This is kind of my description of target date funds. So, the way target date funds work is I describe it as a destination. The destination is always the year that the individual is retiring. Okay? So, if you are 25, you have So if you are twenty-five, you have a very long flight path to, uh, to retirement. But if you're like a person like me, I'm sixty-one, you know, in theory, I like to think I got ten more years of, of work. Um, so that puts me at a target date of twenty thirty-five. So here's the difference. The individual who's starting in this example in their thirties, if you look at the blue part where it's equity, in the traditional, you see a ton more equity. Those are stocks. So it's going to be determined, used as aggressive, aggressive simply meaning it's more of that dollar in the market. As they progress through their work years, by the time you get to that sixty-five, uh, number, you see that the equity position has actually flip-flopped. In other words, it's gone from a high-growth position early. As you're tracking through years, it starts to convert to a protection position. The protection being the fixed income, uh, type of investments, all right? What this product is going to replace, you see the equity positions are still the same. But when you see fixed income in orange going throughout the flight path, you see around forty-seven, you see that Lifetime Income Builder piece, that little, I'm, I'm gonna call it green, uh, piece, replacing bonds and those types of funds. And that Lifetime Income Builder piece is more of an insurance product. So it provides guarantees, all right? So that's, that's the conversion, okay? There we go. All right. So it's built for all stages of life. So early on, it's just like, again, nothing's changed. Very similar in terms of what your, uh, employees already have. So you have greater equity explo- exposure early in the participant's career, adjusting automatically, uh, to reduce risk as they near retirement. The way I describe it to your employees is, think of a train that's going to a destination. Every three to five years, it pulls over to a depot. It takes off some equity, adds on some bonds, all right? Traveling along here, three to five, taking off a little equity, adding on a little bond. So it's getting more protective over time. That's, that's how target date funds work. So that is still in play. Now, what begins to happen around forty, uh, in the thirties, you'll start seeing it begins to capture gains quarterly to lock in future income value. This is really where it separates itself. So if you look, when you see that equity in that first lock, so here's what happened. That market value on a particular date was here. It locked in that high. Now here's the part of what you understand. It locked in the high for income. Didn't lock in the high for market, locked it in for income. So the internal investments are still doing their normal thing. But on that particular day, it locked in that value for income purposes, all right? And that goes on with this product quarterly, all right? So they're constantly locking in. So if you look, you'll see kind of this little gap here, one, two, three lock-ins, and then there was a market dip. Well, you see that straight line for income purposes. If that person wanted to start taking income at that point, they will be locked in at that higher value. Has nothing to do with their market value. So I want to be real clear. There's a market value, there's an income value. I'm gonna take one additional step back. This product, this solution is for individuals who want to use their investments for income, all right? Now if you, and I'm, I'll move forward on it. So just think, hey, income is my priority. This is what this product's for. So then we get to the third bullet here. Participants may receive a monthly required paycheck for the rest of their lives based on the highest locked-in value at that time. So you see where that blue arrow starts, they were locked in at that high. Then in this example, a little further out, they start taking money. The market value dropped, but the income value was based on that high watermark, all right? And it's, it's that number that they're locked in for income for the rest of their lives. All right, so this is an example. Participant has the same seamless experience as they would with any, uh, target date fund. They simply determine how much to contribute and the investment does the rest. So here's the deal. Uh, as, as their investments are today, this is for the four fifty-seven, they choose the amount they want to contribute. Uh, so none of that changes. It works the same way it's been working, uh, for the past five years in terms of how that particular product works. Income activation can start at about sixty-five years old. And here's the really cool thing. They can make decisions. They can decide, yes, I want to take this income, uh, and, and move forward in that direction. Or they can decide, hey, I'm good with my market value. I've got other things. I don't want to take the income. They're not obligated to take the income at all. It's a feature that is available to them, okay? Um, trying to think what other questions come up along those lines. Um, there are no penalties for this product. So some things that come up is, well, it sounds like an annuity. It is not an annuity. This, it's not something that becomes annuitized, uh, so there are no penalties. If they don't use it, it's just, it's their option, okay? All right, so you started six, uh, six and a half percent. Now, um, one of these questions we get is, well, what if they run out of money? If they were to run out of money, in other words, if the underlying investment, their market value went to zero for some reason, then what would happen is, where they were getting six percent, the remainder of the life, of their life, it would drop down to four and a half. And that would only occur if they went down to a zero balance, okay? This is an example of participants, John Forty-six, he enrolled, forty-seven birthday, uh, then he's going to retire. Let's see here. All right. His time account value is a six hundred thousand. His annual income would be thirty-six thousand dollars a year. It's liquid, it's portable. Uh, again, he can start it and he can stop. He's not locked in. This product is designed to drive better participant outcomes. Again, growth opportunity through investments, liquidity, they're not locked in, you know? The reality is, we, we playing, but life shows up, all right? Uh, it's portable. Individuals for whatever reason, uh, decide that there are other opportunities, or life shows up and they go somewhere, it moves with them. Uh, it's easy for plan participants and plan sponsors, uh, so from a processing standpoint here, basically already quit, we're doing it already. We're just switching, uh, switching, doing a fund switch. The high watermark eliminates a sequence of, uh, return risk. Again, the greatest challenge in retirement, I, and we know this, is that variance of the income that we're drawing from. Even if you got a CD, when that CD comes due, that rate might not be available anymore. This eliminates those kinds of concerns. Also increases the ability for participants to retire with independence, all right? So we use it, we say Nationwide, retire with dignity. You know, when I tell people, especially when they're just starting, the real issue of retirement is what kind of shoes you're putting on, right? You know, am I gonna switch work shoes and put on flip-flops, fishing shoes, golf shoes? Or instead of retiring, am I refiring, just simply switching work shoes? So the honest goal is only put on some more comfortable shoes at retirement. And this is just another tool that you all would have as an employer to provide that type of security, especially in a very competitive work, uh, workplace. Any questions? Okay. All right, yes, sir. We're good? Everybody's good? All right, thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, the third item is receiving benefits update from MSI, the county's health broker and community partner, Nomi Health.
All right, Commissioners.
Health System.
All right, Commissioners, we're gonna bring up to you John Leggett, or MSI broker, health broker, and also we have Scott with him as well to accompany him for Nomi Health.
So just a little bit of a preview on this item. Um, a couple of years ago, some of the commissioners had asked us to look at do, uh, doing some direct contracting with the hospital to try to cut out some of the extra costs and the, the middleman, uh, process. And so, um, this resulted out of, out of that request. And, um, we're happy to report that, uh, we are, we are excited. This is gonna start off in January. It's gonna provide some great benefits. And I'll let John go into all of that, but that's where this came from.
Thank you. Yes, good afternoon, John Leggett, MSI Benefits Group, and this is Scott Williams with Nomi Health. Uh, before I get into it, real quick, re, uh, this is just kind of a, how are we doing this year? How are our claims running? A lot of numbers up here. I always circle the thing that I want your eyes to go to, which is the eighty-three percent. So that says through the month of August, we are running at eighty-three percent of expected. If we were running at a hundred percent, we'd be running as expected. So that means we're running about seventy percent, uh, better than expected from a claim standpoint. And that's on our, our, of course, our medical and pharmacy claims through the current Anthem, uh, health plan. This is, uh, gonna look similar to what you would have seen a few weeks ago, the last Board of Commissioners meeting with what the county approved, option two, Nomi Health. As you know, right now and for, for a number of years now, the county's had Anthem, Blue Cross Blue Shield as its plan administrator, which means we've tapped into the Anthem network. The thing that we have done is we've carved out the pharmacy with Veracity, and we've also carved out the stock loss. And that, stock loss is really the big piece that we've looked at every year. When we started having this conversation with doing this direct contract or, uh, this arrangement with Southeast Georgia Health Systems, one of the things that we said all along was, if we're gonna do this, we can't do it with Anthem because Anthem won't allow that. So what you see up there is option two, which is the route we're going for twenty twenty-six. ASR will be the third-party administrator. Um, employees are gonna have a couple of different networks. Tier one network is gonna be the Southeast Georgia Health System, uh, network, Nomi Health network. And, uh, if they are going outside of that network, it's gonna be at the Aetna PPO network, so we call that the RAP, or Tier Two. And we'll get into what those benefits look like. And then the pharmacy coverage will remain with Veracity. They've done a really good job of keeping our costs down. So you can see from an administrative cost, we were going up about five percent with Anthem to about thirty-five, about thirty-five thousand. We did get the wellness fund increased with them. And if you go to option two, which we're, we're going, the route we're going, you'll see it's, it's actually decreased. So administrative costs are going down, and we still do have the, uh, the, the hundred thousand dollar, uh, wellness fund there. So about a ten percent drop, just in fixed admin, admin costs for ASR, the Aetna network and, and Veracity. Scott, I'm gonna let you talk about Nomi Health.
I appreciate that. Thanks, John. And thanks for having me here today. Appreciate it. We, uh, are very excited, uh, as Nomi Health to enter into a direct relationship with the Southeast Georgia Health System. So we are managing, uh, a direct contract with Southeast Georgia Health System. Uh, really, it's a collaborative approach and what I like to call it is more of a community plan. So what I mean from a community plan, um, really, when we go into a market, we want to make our scenario a win-win-win for the employer, for the employees and the provider. So, uh, from an employer's standpoint, uh, we have to have the ability, of course, to be able to offer deeper discounts from a savings perspective. We have to be able to offer a tool for employee retention. From a member perspective, we want to be able to provide better benefits, take the, um, hurdle, the financial burden out of the system for, to be able to get the care they need upfront. So instead of having to make a financial decision on whether you go get your test done, whether you get your knee replacement done, uh, or not, that we take that off the table. So hopefully at the end of the day, you're not turning that knee replacement into a hip replacement. You're not pushing off the testing diagnosis, et cetera, that you need to, um, in, in, in an effort to avoid a catastrophic claim at the end of the day. Uh, I came from a carrier background for over the past thirty years before I joined Nomi. Uh, and as you think of deductible plans, you know, going from a five hundred dollar to a deduct, uh, five thousand dollar deductible five years ago, would have saved you as an employer maybe around forty percent. Today, that's maybe around seven percent. It kind of goes to show that those deductible plans are not working, we're pushing off care, uh, and really causing higher catastrophic claims at the end of the day. Why would a provider enter, enter into an agreement with Nomi, uh, to, um, have a lower discount than what they're getting with an Anthem or a, a Blue Cross? Uh, well, basically it's because we're addressing the revenue cycle management. We're working with them. We provide one thing that the, uh, they can't control with the larger carriers, which is one plan design. It's zero deductible, zero copay, with the exception of urgent care and ER. So a provider is able to give us a discount that's deeper than the Blues because on the Blues, they can't control that deductible where they're collecting about forty-two cents on the dollar right now. So we're helping them from an administrative standpoint of eliminating their collections. We're working with them on prior authorization through our data. We are making prompt payments. So we require that we pay our providers within forty-eight to seventy-two hours of a clean claim. So it still has to go through appropriate audits, et cetera, through the TPA. But then once that's done, we're paying promptly versus holding on to that provider's funds for a period of time. So they're able to actually give us a deeper discount, but come out ahead from a revenue standpoint. So again, the win-win-win from an employer, member and provider standpoint. Address presenteeism, absenteeism from a member standpoint as well.
This, this is kind of what the plan design will look like. So right now, we have two plans. Employees have the, uh, uh, option to select between two plans. And when you're looking up there, when you look under Tier Two, those are what the plan design look like. So right now, under Anthem, if you take the, like, you take Plan One, you've got a thousand dollar deductible, the plan pays eighty percent, the member pays twenty percent. Uh, and then when they're, uh, out of pocket, reach seventy-three, fifty, then the plan pays a hundred percent. Same goes on the Plan Two, the deductible, seven fifty, eighty percent coinsurance, a fif- fifty-five hundred dollar out-of-pocket. That plan design is gonna remain in place for Tier Two, where employees are gonna see a much better be- better benefit, of course, is under the Nomi Health Network with, with Southeast Georgia, with no deductible, no out-of-pocket expenses, no copays. Again, they will still have the ER copay of five hundred dollars and the forty-five dollar, uh, urgent care copay. The other thing that's not changing are the deductions. So employees are not gonna see an increase in what they're paying. Uh, under Tier Two, if, if they don't want to go to Southeast Georgia, they'll, they'll have the huge network, and the huge PPO network that will, they'll have the option of, of going to, and their costs will remain the same as it is today. So the win-win is the county's gonna pay less claims under that Nomi Health network, and the employees are gonna pay no out-of-pocket expenses except for, again, ER and urgent care. We're excited about that. I'll let you talk a little bit just about this real quick.
Yeah, and really, this is just an illustration of kind of how that network typically runs. You know, so you've got your Nomi Tier One network, uh, with zero deductible, zero copay again. Um, and just to give you insight into Nomi, our goal is to build a national network, uh, of Nomi providers. Uh, right now, we're in quite a few MSAs, uh, we're getting ready to make a big announcement in Atlanta as well. Uh, but then typically your regional, or your Tier Two is your regional two network. So like your, um, Anthem or Aetna in this case, and so forth. And then Tier Three being our network. And then just being able to provide the savings, um, on the facility and professional side. Uh, on this side, we're staying up to twenty-five percent on the facility and then another nine percent savings on professional.
So we provided data for a period of July twenty twenty-four through June of twenty twenty-five, and ran, and Nomi ran the numbers. And the projected, uh, out-of-pocket impact in savings, just over a million dollars there, uh, with increase. And this is by u- under the steerage model. We think that, uh, you'll see about a ten percent increase in utilization with Southeast Georgia, both from facility and professional, correct?
Yeah, well, this illustrates a ten percent increase. What I would tell you is, in, in all of our markets, we're seeing fifteen to twenty percent. Uh, the average, uh, Tier One utilization is sixty-six percent in total. And you guys kind of fall right in that picture there with fifty-six percent, or I'm sorry, with, right now, you're at forty-six percent. This illustration shows a ten percent increase up to forty, or to fifty-six. But there's additional savings to be had there if we really realize what we anticipate is to be closer to sixty-six. But we didn't want overpromise and underdeliver really here in this scenario.
And then regarding the network, as we know with the hospital, you also mentioned Frederica Imaging, and there was one other one.
Frederica Imaging, Alta Anesthesia, uh, Podiatry Group, I believe is coming on, and we're in, uh, final negotiations with the Emergency Resource Group.
So that, that, that network would apply even going there, no out-of-pocket expense. Uh, I know you've talked about, um, for, uh, oh my gosh, Blood Work. Lab, Lab Work and Quest, and Quest. You guys have contracts with both of them, correct? Very, very low.
Yeah, very good arrangements there. Around a hundred and five percent of Medicare, just to kind of give you the guidelines. It's a very good deal.
Uh, this is real quick, uh, big, one of the big pieces of our, our health plan is the stock loss. And it's a unique year, um, nationally with, with stock loss carriers, a lot of big claims. So the stock loss market is, uh, telling us with, with the majority of our clients that they want to see September claims data. So we're now in October, September claims data still hasn't dropped. But, um, you can see as it loo- as it stands today, the preliminary increase under Voy, which is our current stock loss carrier, is about fifteen percent. The most competitive option on the table right now is about four percent. This will be firmed up and we, will be brought back to, to, to the Commissioners' meeting, uh, later day, kind of what we do every year. Just wanted to show you, share these numbers. Just wanted to show you, share these numbers. And then this is all tied together. One of the things we did really get into is ASR. ASR is a third-party administrator. They have, what, thirty-five Nomi accounts?
Yeah, probably close to forty now.
Forty. So we, we like them because they're familiar with the model, um, and their, their rates were good. So if you're looking over under option two, assuming the, uh, the final, assuming the stock loss numbers were final, we'd be making the move over to Symmetra. And all in all, the budget, I guess, increase would be just over three percent. Um, one of the things, you know, with Symmetra, we don't feel they're giving us the, uh, the, the discounts they should for the Nomi plan. We think it's gonna run a lot better than what you're, what they're projecting. Where it's really gonna help us is gonna be at, at renewal next year when those claims are down. We think that they'll adjust those factors. But, uh, we'll be looking at the final numbers, probably within the next month on this. One of the other things, uh, we did was we pulled the numbers. This is a two-year period, top twenty providers. So this is August first, twenty-three through July of this year. You can see that the county had just, uh, just over six point four million paid in claims to Southeast Georgia. Um, the numbers are bearing out that it's gonna be about a twenty-seven percent reduction with Anthem, uh, below Anthem. So simple math, that would have looked more like four point seven or about a one point seven million dollar savings, uh, under the Southeast Georgia Health System. So we, 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 and we think that those numbers projected earlier will, will actually kinda be a little bit better. That is, uh, that's everything. No questions during, during the presentation, question?
Looks like, looks like it saves us.
Just a couple of questions, just on, for our employees. So the, um, just, just wanna make sure we're right here. So, uh, co-insurance, a hundred percent if they go to Southeast Georgia, right? And so it's, uh, eighty percent if they go to, uh, through Aetna, outside?
Correct. So think of your mail leakage and, you know, Jacksonville, et cetera.
Yeah. Okay, and then the, uh, ER copay and urgent care copays are, are probably similar, although the, uh, Aetna copay would be a percentage plus the two fifty, right? So.
Actually, I had to correct it up there. It's five hundred on both planes.
It is.
I think the printed version still shows two fifty, but it's five, it'll be five hundred on both planes.
All right, thank you.
Still on the Bloodwork, uh, Quest and, um, the other place is, um, could, Labwork sort of remains the same as it has been?
Yeah. Zero.
Zero.
Copay. Yep. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Right, number four. Receive a presentation from Con, Condry and Associates Incorporated on the county's job classification and compensation plan for the general employee population. Mr. Pollak?
All right, commissioners, we have before you our comp and class plan. Uh, as you know, the goal was to revamp our current classification plan for the non-public safety employees. And we partnered with Condry and Associates to present that to you. And I have Dr. Reese here from Condry and Associates to present that to the board.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. It's, uh, always a ple- pleasure to be back in Glen County, so I was glad to have an excuse to, uh, come down and visit with y'all this week. Uh, wanna say special thanks, uh, to Tamara and to, uh, Dwayne, as well as all the department heads who work so cooperatively with us on this project. So it's been a pleasure. Uh, I was just complimenting Dwayne and saying that this has been one of the easiest clients we've worked with in a while. You guys had everything lined up and, in, in order, and we really appreciate that. Um, so I'd like to just begin by reminding everybody of the objectives of this study. Uh, it's pretty straightforward. We were asked to do really two things. Uh, the first one was to review and upgrade the current classification system, uh, and pay plan for all non-public safety employees of the county. Uh, and then, secondly, and related to that, we were asked to collect salary survey data so that we could produce a recommended pay plan based on, uh, job analysis, job evaluation, and wage survey data. And, and that is what we, uh, what we have done. Uh, there are, um, a few steps involved in that process. I just wanna remind you of those. Um, we began by distributing position questionnaires to all employees, supervisors, and department heads. We asked them to complete that. That was our initial way of gathering data about the jobs. Uh, once, uh, that process was completed, and we had a chance to review those position questionnaires, uh, we then conducted, uh, telephone interviews with approximately fifty percent of your five hundred and eighty-three employees that are covered under this, under this agreement. Uh, we talked with at least, we probably, it's probably more than fifty percent, I don't have that final calculation, but we spoke with at least one person in every job. There may have been some jobs that had multiple people in them. We didn't talk to everybody, but we at least spoke to every person in every jo- one person in every job. And then we spent more time talking with, uh, with the department heads in particular. We gave them more time. We not only talked about the department head jobs, but we talked with them about all of the jobs in their departments. So they helped us get a sense of the jobs as well. And then, once we had gathered, uh, that, that, that job data, uh, from the questionnaires and the interview process, uh, we then began the internal analysis. We used what's called the factor evaluation system. There's nothing unique about that. It's a, a standard, uh, HR tool for evaluating jobs. So we use that to evaluate, uh, every job, uh, classification to arrive at a, at a pay grade. And then we conducted the external analysis. Uh, we designed a customized salary survey for you. Uh, and we went out and we, uh, we surveyed a variety of organizations, asking them about their salaries, uh, for, for positions. Uh, we had really good response, um, and we had Athens Clark, Bullock, Burke, Chatham, Columbia Hall, Henry, Liberty Macon Bid, Pauline, Rockdale, uh, and Walton County. We also had information from the College of Coastal Georgia and Jekyll Island Deafoready. Uh, and then in Florida, uh, we had salary information from Flagler and Nassau Counties and from Beaufort County, South Carolina. So we cast a wide net, uh, we got some really good information for you. And so then we were able, uh, to develop the proposed, uh, salary scale. I believe this is on page six in your, in your, uh, printed report. Um, you'll notice on page six that it goes A through R. Here, we've kinda, we just took out the middle so that we could let you see it better on the screen. But if you look on page six, you can see all of the, all of the steps there. So for every job, for every position in the county, we used our system, uh, to classify them, assign the appropriate pay grade. So you'll see that here, grades nine through twenty-eight. And then we use the information that we gathered from the salary survey, uh, to, uh, develop this salary scale. So just to give you an example, let's take a heavy equipment operator, uh, which would be in, in our proposed system, a grade fourteen. So if you wanna look with me at grade fourteen, let's say you have a heavy equipment operator who is currently employed and is making, uh, forty-five thousand dollars. And we take that employee and we move him up, him or her, up to the next nearest step. So if they were making forty-five thousand dollars, we now recommend they be making forty-seven, four eighty-nine, and forty-five cents. If you have an employee, a heavy equipment operator who's making, uh, forty-eight thousand, we would move them up to the next step. That would be forty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. And so we went through that process for every employee. We put them where they needed to be on, on the pay plan. And this plan that we're showing you, uh, is, uh, at, uh, a little higher than, than a hundred percent of the market. We initially came back with a plan that was at a one hundred percent, which means out of, so if you had ten other organizations you were looking at, uh, Glen County would be right in the middle. It would be five paying more, five paying less. Uh, and then we were asked to adjust that, uh, make that a little better. And so we came back with a plan that we proposed, which is at a hundred and five percent of the market. So out of that ten other organizations, there might be, uh, s- four paying more than you, six paying less than you. So it puts you at a little more of an advantage in the marketplace, but it doesn't, it doesn't break the bank.
I got a question before you leave that screen. The grades, is that based on years of employment?
No, uh, the, the grades are determined by the, the factor evaluation system. There are several factors that are used, like the knowledge required by the, by the job. Um, the, the kind of interactions that person has with other people, if they're at a lower level or at a higher level. Uh, and so, uh, it's, it's a, it's an old system, and we're actually in the process of training the HR staff in using that system so they're able to use it to go forward. So this just says, it gives you a sense of the complexity of, of the job. So a lower-level job would be down, so the nines, tens, eleven. Heavy equipment operators are fourteen. Uh, if you wanted to, in your report, all of these can be found, um, let me find the right page for you here. On page nine, you'll see every department broken down by every job title in that department and the associated pay grade. Hopefully, that'll make a little more sense that way. And then if you look, uh, beginning on page seventeen, we organize the, the jobs according to pay grade. So you start at the top of the twenty-eights, and then it goes down, and then all the jobs are lumped together so you can kinda compare. Okay?
Okay.
So the longevity, um, as far as years in service, that comes into play with the letters across the top. So the, the job is still the same grade that it was graded at through the system? Because that's what the job ranked out at based on that, um, objective system. Uh, but then the, the letters at the top represent the steps that they can take throughout their career.
So they would progress out into, all the way out to R. And it's, it's fifty percent, uh, between the, the lowest and the high, so there's a, a lot of opportunity for growth. You're not gonna have people topping out too early in their career with this system, which, which is something you don't want.
You were using salaries, uh, the numbers, uh, but all this is, you were using, uh, your grades. Can you bring that down a little bit for me?
Um.
For instance, uh, I'm saying.
Okay. Okay.
Got it right there, that's grade twenty-eight.
Okay.
His salary was a hundred and ten, forty.
Well, you would look at, at, uh, on the screen, you look at the grade twenty-eight, and you see what our recommended minimum salary for that is. So anyone who is below the minimum salary, we recommend movement to that minimum salary in that pay grade. Does that make sense? Well, actually, okay, so you're, you're giving the example of someone who's, we rank at twenty-eight?
I gave you a, a bad example, a number, a, a salary number.
Okay.
You're using this at, at a twenty-eight, you know, fifty-nine thousand?
Yes.
Uh, that would be at A.
That would be the minimum salary. If they're making less than that now, that's where we recommend they go, to that minimum.
What, what is, what did the salary be for this plan?
I don't have that, I don't have that current salary for that position in front of me.
We have everybody's salary and what they're making, um, and so.
Comparison of whatever the salary is now, what it would be under that, that's what I think.
I mean, it's gonna be different for every person.
It's huge.
Yeah. So, um, so for, you know, I will say that a lot of people were within five to ten percent of where they recommended. So there, um, there's not tons of huge increases. There are some jobs that we were severely underpaying. But, um, but yeah, they, there's, we have that comparison by person.
And, and no one moved down. We didn't move anyone back in the system. If, if they were already above that minimum, uh, or if they were already where they needed to be, we left them alone. No one went, went backwards, so.
Oh, who, who were, uh, what positions were we underpaying severely?
I would have to look at the, at the data. Um, I mean, we've, I can't, I, I can't off the top of my head tell you, but, you know, with, with all the positions, every single position was reviewed and, and, um, and graded and went from there.
I think, I think it's important that you approach this system not in a piecemeal fashion, you know, looking here and here and here. We try to apply an objective system overall. We don't know these, the people in these jobs, we don't know anything about them, other than what we gained, you know, what we came to learn about them through the interview process and the questionnaire process. So I think it's a good idea to look at the system as a whole rather than focusing on, on individuals. Uh, because, uh, well, you get, you can get a lot of trouble going, going down that path. We're trying to be objective. Now.
Uh, the guy who's on shelf or, or on the, uh, compared to the guy that's, uh, uh, Department Director for an event or an administration.
Uh-huh.
That's the comparison that I like to have.
Okay, uh, I don't have, we don't have that information for you.
That's just a general.
Right. I think we can say because we use the same system, no matter what job was involved. Would, meaning we did two things. We looked at the nature of the job itself and classified it using that, our system. Uh, and then we went out into the market and gathered information about what current salaries are for that position. So that's how we came up with the salary ranges, because we went out and, we saw the list of, uh, organizations that we gathered information from. So we were able to, that's how we came up with those numbers. So yes, if you're asking, is someone at a grade twenty-eight gonna be making more than someone at grade twelve? Well, well, obviously, uh, that's just, that, that, that's the nature of, uh, of salaries and jobs, right?
Yeah, I did, well, for me, I just wanted to know, uh, severely is, is a, a severe word. And so, uh, I know, I mean, normally, uh, Tamara could pop off something, so I, um, I, 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 and I know that we have a bunch of, uh, different positions and, uh, and people. I mean, um, so, um, I'm just con- concerned about that. I think this helps us a great deal with this. I totally support this, but, um, I was just curious.
Commissioner, I would say there's a couple that really come to mind. You could, you could just gauge it by how long we've had some of these positions open. And so just, if you look at engineering, for instance, I think our engineer, uh, assistant county engineer is at a level that, um, the old salary was around seventy thousand with a, with a PE certification. People that, we didn't get any, we don't have anybody to hire. Um, the people that we'd had interested, uh, they're comparable, what they were making was well over, uh, six figures. And so for us to try and get them to, um, bring them into Glen County, we would've had to come up significantly or, you know, come up with other ways to, you know, try and get creative with some of these people. But that's one example. We have our engineering, one, two, three, and four, those have been open for several months. We have construction inspectors that opened for a couple of months. I mean, we've had a, we've been trying to hire a, a vet for four years.
Right.
This may, this may, uh, excuse me, I didn't hear.
No, I, I agree, I'm, that's what I wanted to do, thank you.
Exactly, um, in these positions, uh, I'm saying, I'm saying, right now, I'm gonna go back to you. Uh, he's got grade twenty-eight, but he, uh, administrative assistant is a grade of twelve.
Mm-hmm.
Would the grade of twelve ever be able to get to a twenty-eight?
No, not unless they are promoted into another position. Because, because the, the grade system.
So the, the grade that the job is assigned is never gonna, is not gonna change unless the duties of the job change. So if the duties of the job change, then it would be looked at to regrade it. But if a, a administrative assistant is a twelve, that position will always be a twelve. Now, they can move along the steps in twelve, starting at forty-three thousand, and they could go up to sixty, um, sixty-two, is it sixty-two, sixty-five? I can't, okay. Sixty-five thousand throughout their career if they never change to another position, and they just stay in an administrative assistant. The grade number won't change, they will just move along the steps in that grade.
And, and I guess, I interject here again. My, my question is, we don't, we don't have any of the letters behind the numbers to know where we are. Um, I thought the FLSA number was the recommended letter, but that's not in it at all.
That's, that's a Fair Labor Standards Act. That tells you whether an employee is, uh, exempt from that rule, of the, from the overtime rule, or not exempt from the overtime.
Everything was N or E.
It's every position's gonna be either be exempt from that, because that government, federal government rule about whether or not you have to pay them overtime, or they're not exempt.
Yeah.
And there are certain criteria that you have to use to, to determine that.
So where the person falls in the letters depends on their, um, your, their years of service, how long they've been here, how much, um, additional certifications they've gotten, things like that, to move along those letters. So, um.
And you have all that.
Yes.
That's all there, and that was what I was looking for, uh.
Because it's gonna, yeah, it's, it, so every position is, it's gonna be based on the person in that position where they fall through the letters. Um, and, and that'll change by person, by how long they've been here, et cetera. But the grade, the job grade was what we were needing to get at to say, okay, this job is worth this much in the market. This is how much we need to pay in this job to be able to hire people for this role. Um, and that's where, you know, um, this group really helped us to look at where does this job and its functions fall in this chart. Um, but yeah, so some people may be coming in at a A. Uh, some people might be coming in at a D. Um, the compress, the, um, the letter based on their years of service, it can go from A to D. So if you've been here for, you know, fifteen So if you've been here for, you know, fifteen years, you're gonna, you're gonna be at a D. But if you've been here for one year, you're gonna be at an A.
So the, the, let me, the first thing we do though, however, is like I said, put everybody somewhere on this plan, right? So if, if, like we said, so if you have that heavy equipment operator, to go back to that initial example, grade fourteen, and there you have someone who's been here for several years and they're making, maybe they've been here all of their career, they're making, uh, sixty-three thousand dollars a year potentially, if they've been here for a very long time, then, then, then we would put them on, on a step P, if I'm saying that correctly, uh, which would put them at sixty-eight thousand. We'd move them up to the next, next step, if that makes sense. So every, every individual gets placed somewhere on this pay scale depending on the, the, the grade system we have developed, the, the salary scales. We have, we didn't look at time, for time of service at this point, we just looked at where they are right now in the pay scale and then we put them on, on, at the next, next, next step.
I'm just trying to think of, I'm just trying to do scenarios, like firefighter for instance.
No, they're not in the plan, correct. This is non.
Safety, yeah, yeah, public work.
I can find somebody, a public work, a public work person, you know, that, you know, you can't have, oh, everybody can't be a supervisor, everybody can't be this, like, even if they've been there.
That's right. So that was part of our job was we were asked to come in and do an analysis of all those jobs, right? So we, that's where we, 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 we went through the questionnaire, the interview process. We looked at current job di- titles for that, what they were doing, and we helped figure out whether or not that was an accurate description of their job, maybe it didn't fit at all what they were actually doing. In which case we had a new job title proposed, right? Which is then associated with a pay grade, which falls in this plan. So we looked at every, every position, uh, and we helped to determine, so if you look at, at that list of, I think I, some page.
I think, what you're, what you're coming up with, I'm just, I'm just trying.
No, I'm, I'm here to help you figure it out, that's why I'm here, so, yeah.
My, my question is, is you've got, uh, just say, an admin or a person in a clerk's office that's been there twelve years and obviously they've been in a bad pay scale, and another person is coming into that position, is there a separation?
Well, let's, let's, maybe the next slide will help us talk about that. So this is the big picture, this is our proposed cost of implementation, right? So this is, if we have, if we did what I, what I said, we took every individual, we put them somewhere on that pay scale where they needed to be, and then we just calculated how much that was gonna cost you, right? And so to do that, those classification changes, uh, that would, that's, that's cost, uh, one million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars.
And to interrupt just for clarification there, classification changes, that means that somebody was in a position that should have been in a diff, classified in a different position.
No, not necessarily. What we mean by that is this, this is just what we mean by putting everybody in this new classification system, right? To implement this plan with this salary scale, where everybody goes where they need to go, that's what it costs, which is about four point four three percent of your current payroll.
So you, you, uh, took a job, you, you all interviewed people, you looked at that, and then you took that job and went out to the marketplace to find out what the market is paying for that job.
Correct, that is correct.
And then you placed people in.
So we placed people before we went out to the market, so we, 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 we didn't do it the other way.
I got you. So, um, so when, when you did that, um, that's when people, you placed them, um, using marketplace information so their, their salary went, if it was where it was supposed to be, it didn't change, but if it was below, it went up.
That's right, and if it was above, it didn't, didn't go down.
Okay, and so then.
We, we, we hurt nobody.
And then the equity part of this is what?
Well, okay.
It's not a good word.
So, so when, when we do this, when we take everybody where they are right, right now, based on their current salaries and we put them in the new pay system, what you were just talking about is sometimes you have something called compression that happens. If you have people who've been here a while, not making much more than people who have been here, uh, just, you know, a little while. Uh, because if they were all, if your system was really low and we put all your H E Os, if they were all under forty-seven thousand and we moved them all up to forty-seven thousand, now you've got everybody there clustered together. So, uh, what we recommend then is what is called an equity adjustment, which is an adjustment based on years of service combined with, uh, 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 performance evaluations, right? So it, it's not just an automatic, everybody gets moved based on their years, it's years plus performance. Uh, and, and that is a system that's gonna be worked out internally, we're gonna help and, and work through that. Uh, I think the department heads will have a lot to say about who gets the, those performance increases. But what we would recommend is, uh, that it not exceed, the equity adjustment not exceed that second number there, which is another million, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, another, uh, four point nine three percent of payroll, just to keep it in line. So this is where now, department heads gets to go in and say, correct those, those, you know, where somebody's, they're pushed up together, somebody needs to move out a little bit more, they can do that there, right? And then once you get this settled then, everybody needs to get an adjustment every year, so they can keep moving out. And, because if you've got, if your system's kind of wonky right now, we may not be able to retroactively fix every problem that you have. What we can do is build a new system, start from where we are right now and make sure you treat everybody fairly going forward, right? So we recommend that they move up that scale through those letters, uh, as, as, as their seniority increases. Any questions about that equity adjustment, then you should see the total implementation costs there.
Well, I'm, I'm all for, you know, we, we're condensing down a little bit our grade systems and getting everybody into categories and I, I understand that, um, uh, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to reconcile in my mind, uh, people that may have been classified wrong, how they, how we give them in the right classification. I, I had seen that as, as getting people in, in the right.
Well, we worked very hard to do that, because again, we had those questionnaires, followed by interviews with those individuals, followed by interview, individuals, uh, followed by interviews with the department heads. So we worked really hard to find people who were misclassified and to make sure they were classified properly. And I don't have a sense, it's a big, it's a big system, it's a big complicated system, I don't have right now a sense of like, who is, you know, reclassified and who wasn't. But we just came in, we, what we tried, what we tried to do is to come in and, and, uh, regardless of what the title may be currently, we're, we're analyzing the job, right? So we're coming in as outsiders who do this all the time and say, okay, you say this, this position is an administrative assistant, and we're gonna look at it, as just as an example. If it doesn't look like an administrative assistant to us, we think it's, say, it's a higher level, maybe it's supervising someone or one or two people, it might, it might be an administrative coordinator, it's gonna be a higher pay grade than the administrative assistant. So we did that for every position, we looked, every department, we looked at every position and did that. So I hope we solve those problems, at least, I mean, as, as much as we can.
I understand what the goal is. The goal is to try to make it fairer, uh, and that makes, and I, I see the work that you put into it, and you as well.
They can't hear you online, please speak into the microphone.
Well, it, it isn't, the goal is to, to make it a fairer system. It's also, the goal, uh, is to be able to recruit qualified employees for the jobs and to keep them in their jobs, right? So if you don't, if you're not paying a fair market wage for an employee, you're not gonna hire anybody that can really do the job and you're not gonna be able to keep them, because they're gonna jump ship and go somewhere else. So what we're trying to do is position you in the market, so that when potential, uh, employees and current employees look around, they can see it's not gonna be that much better for them if they jump ship and go somewhere else, that they're doing just fine here and they're being treated fairly here. So the major reason to do a project like this is to make sure you are recruiting good people and that you're keeping the people that you want to have here, and, and this will help you a lot in that.
Commissioners, if I could, just add a couple of things. So, uh, we talked about it, Commissioner, you brought this up, so we did have over, uh, I think we had fifty-something different classifications. So it was just, it was very hard to manage that many different jobs. And so we tried to condense that first of all, which we did. And so when we looked at it, uh, they, they did a good job of looking at all the requirements for each one of the jobs, all the certifications that were needed, whatever it might be, and then scrubbed it with not only all of us, but certainly with the people themselves and with their supervisors to try and make sure that they fit in the right classification, so they fit in the right job. This will, and then with the system that we have in place with the, with the letters, that'll help us eliminate that compression that we continue to see in most of our positions here. So going back to that, you have somebody that's been on for fifteen years making, uh, a little more than somebody who's been on for, for a year. And so that just eliminate, that's how, helps us, uh, uh, solve that problem. And then the last thing, we still have the career path out there, so people can actually apply for other jobs with, up the ladder. They just need to make sure that they have the skills and experience, and that, that's what we're trying to do too. We're trying to develop our people so that they can, um, promote and, and, and try and apply for some of these other jobs up the ladder. So that's all part of it as well, and, um, we have, Tamara has, uh, a lot of that information based on some of the questions that you asked, who, who kind of landed where, but we're pretty confident now based on the, on the work that was done by this group. Uh, and by the way, I think we have to do this every three years, right? So we're required to do this type of study every three years. So this timing was right for us and, uh, we'll, we'll certainly share with you any other information that you want based on some of the specifics that you asked.
And to speak of careers, we did something, you already had some, but we maybe built in some more career ladders. Not every position is something that would have a career ladder, but some, for example, I'm, I'm looking here at, uh, deputy court clerk, uh, in the superior court clerk's office, uh, that position is currently at a grade ten. Uh, you'll see a footnote in the report, uh, which says, uh, may be designated senior deputy clerk and placed at grade twelve. So at the discretion of the department head, that, once that employee has been there a little while, they can move up to a senior clerk position and move up in pay grade. So that's not true of every position, not every position is of the nature that that would be practical. But here you can see that a, some, a clerk who's been there for five or six years is training all the other clerks, they can move up to that senior level. And so we did that for several positions throughout the organization.
I think the approach was, um, good and results, uh, I think are, have proven the approach. It's a good baseline that we can, uh, build upon every three years and, um, so I like the results. And in terms of the details on individual contributor changes, I think staff's got a strong grip on that and will be able to adjust as needed.
One of the things that we discussed with the consultants was, you know, the board's direction that pay needs to be based on performance. So, um, one of the big pieces of this is that that equity adjustment will be looked at based on years of service as well as performance. So if you have someone who has just always done the bare minimum and never, never really tried to advance their skills or go above and beyond, their equity adjustment is not gonna be the same as someone who has pushed forward, gotten certifications, enhanced their skills, and, you know, is always doing more and giving more and they, that should result in a higher performance review. So, um, you know, that was something that we really wanted to make sure that, um, based on your direction, that we included in this plan.
And this equity adjustment that we're talking about, here is of course a one-time thing related to the implementation of the new plan. And we would hope you have performance-based measures going forward that would help you, you know, progress people out in, into their pay ranges.
When are we looking at implementing that?
So we plan to bring it to the board for approval at the next meeting, um, so a week and a half out. Um, and then if, if it is approved at the next meeting, then, um, we in HR and finance have a whole lot of work to do and, uh, we anticipate pay rate changes coming into effect at the second payroll in November.
I think we, we still have a couple of tasks for you. Uh, one of the things we did was we created new job descriptions for every position in the organization. So those job descriptions are fresh, they're consistent with one another across the board, and they capture information we got through that questionnaire, interviews, and department head interview process. So those have, and then those have all been sent back out to the department heads who have reviewed them. Those can now come back to my desk, because I'm, among other things, I'm the writer on the project, I personally produce every one of those job descriptions. I know a lot, a lot about the jobs in Full Account, I'm gonna tell you that. Uh, maybe not all the individual names of the people, but the jobs, I've got a pretty good sense of what y'all are doing around here. Um, and so those can now come back to me with all those edits and changes, so they'll also go through another round of, of, uh, I'll make those edits and send those back. Uh, so we'll do that, and then we provide it for a year, we, we've, uh, our contract says a year of free follow-up technical assistance. So as you're working on implementing this new pay plan, we're gonna, we'll be there to help you and, you know, try to, uh, help everybody figure it out so that it goes smoothly. Uh, as I said, we're in the process of training, uh, the HR staff in the factor evaluation system so that going forward, if they have a new job that's created with a new title, they'll be able to use this system to determine what the pay grade would be, and we'll provide, again, that's part of our free one-year support, we'll review all of that. We have clients we worked with for twenty-five years and just pretty much, if, if it always doesn't get out of hand, you know, with a hundred new jobs, if you send two or three jobs a year to us, we'll help you grade those and figure out where they belong in your system going forward too. So we'll be there to have your back knowing if you need that. Okay, so, any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all very much.
All right, number five, receive a review of proposed changes to the Glen County personnel policy. Mr. Pollak, it's been yours any had, isn't it?
Quincy, that's it for me, sir. All right, Commissioner, so before you, you should have a copy of the personnel policy white sheet. Just gives you all the proposed changes. Um, they coincide with this proposed, um, class and comp plan, so we have a few new policies added to, um, our policy manual. We also have some edits towards, uh, our policy as well. So I'm not gonna spend the time going for each line item, but I can offer you the time to review the, the list of items here. I can touch on the, the new additions to the policy. Um, first four here would be the first one, policy one and four point one one, which is the Employee Referral Program Policy. What it allows us to do is to make sure we can allow employees that are here at Glen County to refer friends and family to Glen County and get an incentive to refer employees, or candidates, sorry, to apply for jobs that are vacant in Glen County. Uh, additionally, we have policy one ten point eight, that is the return of property displaying Glen County, um, logo. So any embossed, um, county shirts, instead of taking those shirts or those items to Goodwill, we want you to dispose of those items, and we're gonna just set some guidelines for employers so they know what to do with Glen County's property when they leave Glen County as an employee. Next, we have the, um, policy one eleven point twelve, that's the medical catastrophic leave donation policy. We have tons of employees right now with overflowing medical, uh, catastrophic leave balances. That allows employees to donate to their peers and friends, employees that are in need, they can donate those catastrophic leave hours to employees that are out on medical leave for medical reasons. Lastly, we have a fractionalization policy that gives us some more protections in regards to workplace relationships throughout Glen County. Want to make sure we are aware of those relationships, and if there's going to be any conflict of interest to Glen County, we can take appropriate action if needed. Um, any questions about the bullets here, before we move forward?
So Commissioners, and this is just, like you said, a bulleted list. We are working on finalizing the redlined version so that you'll have the details of what is changing. Um, that is, um, being completed by Dwayne, is it, is it available yet or not quite yet?
Redline is, but if you have to go to Mr. Monk first.
Okay, so, um, once Aaron finishes his reviews of that, that'll be also, um, provided to you with the details of, of what changes are being made in this, but we just kind of wanted to give you a bulleted list of some of the things that are gonna be proposed. Um, once we get that out to you for your review, please feel free to reach out to myself or to Dwayne with any questions. Those policy changes will also be coming to you for approval at the next board meeting.
Any questions about the list?
I have none. Any other?
Thank you all for your time today.
Aaron, do we have me? I will entertain a motion to adjourn, gentlemen.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor? Adjourn.